Excuse me, I'd like to call the Teaching and Learning Subcommittee meeting of November 25th to water, and at this time I'll turn it over to Mr. Reherne to tell us about Broad Meadows.
Thank you so much. Thank you Chair Lebo and members of the Quincy School Committee. Let me begin by thanking you for this opportunity to present our 2024-2025 Broad Meadows School Improvement Plan. It is my honor to be in my second year as a principal of Broad Meadows Middle School, working along with a dedicated and caring staff of teachers and support personnel to serve the students and families of the Meadows community. This evening I look forward to sharing with you our reflections on our progress from last year, as well as our considerations for our next steps. What continues to be at the cornerstone of my work over the first year and a quarter has been taking the time to have the conversations with staff, students, and families to learn about the strengths and needs of our community. It is through these relationships and the continued connections that we will understand one another and give us the overall direction of where we are headed. Giving students and families a voice through these connections will always be a top priority at Broad Meadows. Reflecting on our prior year's data with staff at Assessment Day, we noticed a mix of achievement in areas that needed additional focus. As noted on page six, we met map growth projections on reading map assessments for grades seven and eight and just missed projected growth for grade six. That said, grade six showed much more significant achievement on the MCAS assessment than grades seven and eight, and overall, our growth was in the typical high band. In the areas of mathematics, we met and far exceeded growth projections in grades six to eight on spring map assessment. On MCAS, we noted on aggregate a one-point decrease in the overall scaled score, with our growth falling into the typical low-growth category for most subgroups. One of our highlights, however, was growth in our English Language Arts and Mathematics MCAS with our lowest-performing subgroup. For science, all three grades showed modest growth on the science map assessment, with just our eighth grade not meeting their map growth target. That said, on MCAS, we saw a decrease in the average composite scaled score by several points as we learned a new science MCAS assessment. Although not a formal goal, but always an area of focus, we were happy to see that we met our percentage of English language learner students meeting their proficiency targets for the 2023-2024 school year. This is of particular importance to us, as we chart a much increasing overlap of students receiving both EL and special education services, with over 20 students in our LDC program also receiving LDC services. Identifying the appropriate services in the school day to support both language acquisition, as well as addressing a language-based learning disability are discussions which are always ongoing. We were also pleased to see a significant decrease from the 2022-2023 school year in the number of students coded as chronically absent, reducing the number by over 10% last year and noting a significant decrease in all but one subgroup. I say to students all the time, where you are says an awful lot about who you are, and having our students with us in school is exactly where we want them to be. From an academic standpoint, understanding where our students are is always the first step, as we complete formative, benchmark, and observational assessments in the fall and rely on summative data from the spring to assist us in identifying needs of our students. Beginning on page 11, you will see the identification of specific SMART goals related to ELA, Mathematics, and Science, and finally, Social and Emotional Learning, that we as a staff feel will work to further support additional growth in our school community. For English Language Arts, we will continue to utilize MAP as an important benchmark assessment, and will chart growth at each grade level to support instruction. That said, we have chosen to focus our specific goal for the year on the writing process, which will be measured through MCAS growth. Students will be writing in response to varied text. Through use of mentor texts, Common Scoring Guidelines, and the continued focus on using text-based evidence to support claims, we hope to see an increase in the overall scores of our students on essay-style MCAS questions. Social Studies staff will also be supporting this goal with the use of writing prompts, which allows students to compare and contrast various themes based on informational readings. On page 16, I draw your attention to our school-wide math goal, built very much in the same way as our ELA goal, with a focus on growth, using individual map data as a benchmark, but placing a more specific focus on MCAS constructed-response-style questions. This includes building stamina for more complex, multi-step problems, and placing a specific focus on students explaining their mathematical thinking. Additions to the year include the use of ST Math in grades six and seven, and a new small-group targeted instruction model for grade eight students. In our science goal on page 18, we will also make use of MAP to chart growth, but place a specific focus again on constructed-style response questions, as we continue to look ahead to the changing MCAS assessment. Piloting open PSYED curriculums and looking ahead to using gizmos in grades seven and eight with its interactive science simulations will allow our students to be better prepared for storyline-based inquiry, constructed-response-style questions. Finally, you will see our fourth and final goal, which is a focus on the overall social-emotional health and wellness of our student body. Success and challenges for our students in this area can be reflected in so many data points, like attendance, engagement, and extended-day activities, student safety and discipline reports, office referrals, and finally through the vocal survey, which really includes student voice and takes all these things into consideration. We chose the average overall school index of our school on the vocal survey as a measure of our school, and planned action steps that reflect an importance on attendance, engagement, and student safety. Along with significant supports that we have in place, some additional new steps include bringing in the Massachusetts Aggression Reduction Center, or MARC, for kickoff assembly in early October to address topics like treating others with kindness, how to handle conflict, and bullying, as well as safe online behavior. The message was also intended to empower students to speak up if they see a problem, and let a trusted adult know so we can support. We are following that up with a second presentation with a similar message on acceptance and kindness through the folks at Sandy Hook Promise, which is set for later in December. We are also excited to have opened our first Broad Meadows Middle School Chapter of SAVE, Students Against Violence Everywhere, which is being chaired by health teacher Jane Minton. It is through continued messaging, direct instruction, and student groups like SAVE that we hope to continue to elevate the voice of students at our school. Communication also continues to be a key to success, as we continue our practice of sending weekly newsletters to our families highlighting important school events using our S-MOR system. As I have mentioned, S-MOR allows us to translate our newsletter, supporting many of our Broad Meadows families who speak over 20 different languages. We are excited to continue our robust extended-day program, which includes over 70% of our students in grades six to eight. Through a blend of academic support programs, enrichment activities, and intramural and extramural sports, we are excited to include so many of our students beyond the bell in the mornings and afternoons. We were especially excited to bring back our Broad Meadows Drama Program last year, with the entire school community coming together to support the production of Annie Junior. This year, our drama program is back at it in full force, looking forward to an early February production of a spoof on Shakespeare called Something Rotten Junior. You're all more than welcome to attend. And as much as I've enjoyed watching our students sing about the Renaissance, it is programs like Operation Day's Work, Student Council, and our newly-formed SAVE chapter, where students take on leadership roles in our school community that have me most hopeful for the future. Our students have so many incredible ideas and will undoubtedly change the world. We also continue to be grateful for the connections we forge with our families and involvement they have with our school. I'd like to thank our active PTO, who support school events and initiatives, already supporting all three grades attending school field trips, and certainly looking ahead to supporting more exciting, authentic learning experiences for our students moving forward. Finally, I'd like to thank our entire school community, including staff, students, families, and business partners for all of their support. It has been a wonderful start to the year, and I look forward to our continued success working together. I thank you for the opportunity to serve the students and families of Broad Meadows, and I welcome any questions and feedback you may have regarding our plan. Thank you.
Mrs. Hubley.
Thank you very much for your presentation. So I just want to say, I love your goals. I think you have very strong goals that complement each other, and that's great. I love your fourth role especially. I think that's a really good goal. And although I do see that you have 97% of students that are open to having friends who come from different backgrounds, that's fabulous. And I also see that your suspension in incident total is low, so that's great as well. But I do love that you still want to have that goal in there. I think that's great to have that to keep on everything. I think that's wonderful. Although I know that we're going to be moving the facilities requests improvements over to our Facilities Subcommittee and our school needs, most of those will probably go into budget. But I did want to ask, the floor tiles, various locations that need repair, replacement, including the main office, is that a safety concern? I'd want to make sure we bring that up ahead of time if it is.
I would say not an immediate safety concern, but one that is related to abatement in time that would need to be addressed in time. I know, meeting with Mr. Hines, he's been over to the school, so he's spoken about a timeline overall for when to get that done. I know a lot of work was done at Atlantic Middle School, which he had referenced. In previous, to my time at Broad Meadows, a lot of work had been done there as well. So my hope is it'll be done on the sooner side, but not of immediate concern at the moment.
And I thought we had Chromebooks available, and you're saying that you need additional replacements. We told you we don't have Chromebooks available.
So we do. I think the challenge always is, kids are good at going through Chromebooks at times, to be perfectly frank. A lot do leave us and come back all the time. I am not the computer expert. Irvin does a great job in getting the Chromebooks back to us. I would say at the start of the year, it was a little bit tighter. We had some computers, whether they be battery issues or things like that, that I think we're in the process of kind of going back and forth. Even since writing this, I know we've had a new influx of previously-used Chromebooks in, so it's been a great help to us as well. We did have some that were kind of school-based Chromebooks. We had a couple of Chromebook cards that were there. So we dipped a little bit into that for a bit, but we have since replenished that, and we're back in better shape.
And the mounted projection replacement bulbs, you've been asking for those for a while. Are they on back order?
So, no. I would say it's something that's a little bit more of a challenge for us in time. So the mounted projector bulbs carry a little bit more of a cost, and they're related actually to the mounted projectors in general. I think with the switch to a lot of online resources, they are more and more a real necessity in our school. And so just taking a look at some of the projectors that are in our building, some of them are older. They're kind of on their last legs a little bit, and they'll go in time. And in some ways, it's a matter of choosing, do we put kind of money into an older projector to buy a bulb, or are we looking at kind of updating the entire projector overall to a newer setup in the classroom? So it's kind of that dance back and forth a little bit. But I think not having a projector in a classroom now would be a real significant impediment for a classroom teacher. Right now, all of the classrooms do have projectors in them, and one or two where the bulbs are kind of on their last legs, we're in discussions about whether or not we're going to kind of replenish those bulbs and look longer-range. Some of the models actually, you can't even buy the bulbs for them anymore. So it's really going to be a matter of setting up a desktop projector in time, and then looking forward to kind of a greater introduction to newer systems going forward.
I agree. That's very important for our teachers to have in their classrooms. So thank you. Thank you very much, and thank you for the presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Hubley.
Mr. Regoli?
Yes, sir.
Mrs. Perdios.
Thank you. So I've waited 10 years to be able to, in official capacity, say what a great leader we have in Nick. He really is the whole package. He was the principal at Marshall when my kids went through there for eight years, and we were lucky to have him as our principal for my kids and everyone in the point. So I know Broad Meadows is lucky to have him. You know, one of the smartest, most inclusive principals that I've met, just full of school spirit, and the kids know how much you care. So I am so excited you're with Broad Meadows and trying to make a difference there, too. And I'm sure those families are appreciative that you're there. And with that, I just have a couple of comments, not really many questions. I really thought your reflection on the vocal data was very thoughtful. I really appreciated even seeing as an action step in your ELA goal, having a diversity of texts, kind of to sort of go to that vocal information that you had gotten there. So I liked that. I liked your comment about normalizing discussions around feelings and emotions. I think that would go a lot toward, there's a question in the vocal survey about if you feel comfortable sharing your thoughts in class or your feelings in class, and I think that's helpful to normalize that and make that feel like it did at Marshall. I like that in your STEM fair, you're focusing on physical science, which again, was something that linked to your goals. Thought that was fantastic. I wanted to ask, what is Operation Day's Work? What do the kiddos do in that?
So Operation Day's Work is, boy, if Jim Phelan were here, he'd do a better job of giving you the history than I could. But it's an extended-day program. I believe there's 10 to 15 chapters around the country, actually, and it was brought into Broad Meadows years and years ago. And actually, our students in Operation Day's Work, the background of it is related to really understanding the kind of cost of what things are around the world, and the impact that a day's work, a day's pay, can have on some of those actions. So actually, our Broad Meadows team, actually, they work to earn money at certain points. They'll do certain service projects to raise money, fundraisers around the school. And there's also, it's grant-funded, so there's some grant money available as well. And they actually make a choice every year. I don't know that they've finally decided yet this year, but they make a choice every year to fund certain grants that come their way through the project. And these are far-reaching projects. Last year, they funded projects in Africa related to schools and gardening, and in prior years have had significant impact on, and a small amount of money has had incredibly significant impact around the world. And going up on Friday afternoons and watching these kids have these conversations about what feels like, certainly $10,000 is not a small amount of money, but it's, you know, when you talk about building schools and things like that, it feels small in relation to what we do. But these kids are engaged in these conversations, and it's incredible, absolutely incredible what they're doing. So it's a group that meets on Friday afternoons at our school and is engaged in those activities.
That's great. Thanks. Yeah, I liked seeing how many variety of programs you had, extracurriculars and drama. I'm glad that I saw Annie. That was fantastic last year. I'm looking forward to the production this year. Your class sizes looked great. It seemed like that was not an area of need for you guys. And the only thing I wanted to ask, and you just happened to be first on this one, so it's sort of, my questions, comments kind of coming into yours, but the advanced numbers that we have, the advanced demographics, I'm wondering if, would it be something that this body might like to see, the kiddos that are in the APC program at Central, kind of tracing them back to their home schools to see how many of the kids from, that would have been Broad Meadows, you know, naturally matriculating kids, are in the APC program? I'm just wondering if that's something anyone else was, I was curious about that as I was reading the advanced numbers in all of the middle school SIPs. So I didn't know if that was something, additional piece of information, maybe next year, we could just link back to see how many kids are in the APC program from each of the, does that make sense?
I just want to clarify. So are you asking for the kids that currently are at Central, linking them to, is that, or are you asking for the high school?
No, 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 the Central program. So like on page 31, I'm just using again, Nick's, because it's the first one here, the advanced class enrollment. Like, we have all this data on advanced classes, which is fantastic, but I'd love to see how many kids from each, basically, the other middle schools, a lot of their scores reflect, Central scores reflect having all the APC kids there. I'd just love to see how many each of the other middle schools have lost, how many kiddos we've lost to Central that would have been in this number had they chosen to stay. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that makes sense.
And I'm just wondering if that's something that, I don't want to ask, you know, unilaterally, if that's something anyone else might be interested in seeing as well.
So I'm much more interested in seeing the number of kids who are getting into advanced classes who didn't get into APC or didn't choose to go to Central, because I think having put those advanced classes in the middle school has been enormous. I mean, 84 kids at Broad Meadows are taking advanced classes. And I think, Ms. Perdios, one of the issues was, we have kids who are really, really bright in one subject, and maybe they're English learners, so they can't be really, really high achievers in English right now, but we can give them math and science classes. So I think doing that is really, I'm much more impressed with this than wondering about who went up, because we're still addressing those kids. I'm a little concerned about the diversity in those numbers. I think we, I was hoping that reach was going to help that, but it's not, the diversity is not as diverse as I would like it to be, in some of the places. But, so I'm not all that interested in knowing who went, but I am really glad to see those numbers. 84 kids taking advantage of advanced classes that didn't get into the APC program. How cool is that?
That was it. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Mrs. Giotrovi, you good?
Mrs. Hubley asked my questions, so I'm good there. And I echo Mrs. Perdios's initial comments about you, Nick, and the great job you do.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you both.
I have a couple of questions.
Sure, please, yeah.
So on page, on page 12, in number three, in your action steps, where it says, "Allow students to see themselves in materials they are reading in school."
Yep.
So still, only 56% of the kids there say they see themselves. So how are you going to go about doing that?
So I think a lot of that speaks to text complexity and text choice. I'll use my seventh-grade teacher, Ms. Cronin, as just an example. So there are certain novels that the students will choose to read altogether, and then there are also certain choice novels that she brings in, a diverse set of texts to her classroom, and she really allows children to make that choice. So I think just allowing children those choices and those options within the classroom is certainly one choice. I think also looking at our reading selections overall, I think we're constantly, as I was writing this, or working with our teachers in writing this plan, I think so often that reading is breathing in, writing is breathing out, and looking at the MCAS assessments, I see this shifting to certainly informational text, and there's a lot more down that road, which it is just information. So children choosing to read for fun, pleasure, and enjoyment, and pick up a novel and read, I think is so crucially important. So seeing somebody like a Ms. Cronin do something like that really matters to us. And I think it's making the kids aware of the different text selections that are out there for them, the choices they can make, and then giving them that choice. One of the things that I thought you might bring up in our vocal survey, and is something that we speak to all the time, is student voice at school. It's an area that, tying a few of those questions together, it's still an area that I struggle with at times, things like, you know, students participating in planning lessons or creating rules. They're challenging, and we want to give students some level of choice. It works so often for kids in general, to give them some level of involvement in that. So I think choice is a great place, but also making sure that those resources are available to them. They know how to select a text that might be interesting to them, and then being open to discussing it when it's done, and talking about how they see themselves in that text.
Yeah, that's great. That is great. So she has a small library of texts she can use?
That's exactly it, yep. And students are welcome to bring in texts from outside, as long as they're approved by her as well. But, and it's just an example of what that looks like. That's happening in other classrooms as well, but Ms. Cronin is certainly a champion of it.
And you're right about the informational text that's being pushed everywhere. So it kind of takes away from the
It's a little more, it's a little more kind of nuts and bolts.
Little how to see yourself and something like that. On page 14, I just have one comment about your social study goal. I know the rest of your goals are great, but this doesn't look like it's measurable to me.
Sure. And I think it's really a jump off of our ELA goal overall. I think we'll see the reflection in it. I'd love to see a social studies goal. As a former social studies teacher as well, I don't know that I celebrate more MCAS overall. It's a lot. But we are interested, I was just looking with Ms. Clifford, at the social studies MCAS from last year, and there's a lot there. There's an awful lot in the civics world, and we look forward to kind of learning a little bit more about that. And I think there can be something more measurable in time, but right now, I think their relationship would be to the ELA writing right now.
And I see also in your social-emotional learning goal, you're doing something similar with creating adopt monthly D E to be supported by academic program staff. So that's great. On page 26, nope, oh yes, page 26, your extended-day offerings. I did not know what the SAVE chapter was, so thank you for telling me. And that's again, stamp out?
Students Against Violence Everywhere. And it's, I would say it's brand-new for us. We're just learning it. It's a connection to, you'll probably hear a little more from my colleagues about the Sandy Hook Promise, which Mrs. Perpil has been instrumental in bringing in this year. So it's just a wonderful, they'll lead with an assembly a little bit later on this year. It starts with hello, and then it actually follows up with a message next year about see something, say something. And again, MARC tied in nicely to that as well. So again, that speaks to building that student voice a little bit in school, and SAVE is kind of a student offshoot of that.
Class size is amazing. Really is amazing. I like to see the idea about the summer fly-up. So as Ms. Hubley said, we're going to put that into our budget thing to see if we can squeeze that into the summer budget. I think it's a great idea.
We welcomed students from, I think, eight different elementary schools last year, and the sixth grade does a great job of holding some assemblies, and they do the ropes course. They bring the kids together, but we'd love to get the kids together over the summer as well.
And your accountability data is great. It really is great. So congratulations on your first year.
Thank you. Year and a quarter now, second year, yeah. I don't know where that time went. It feels like Marshall yesterday, but.
Thank you very much. I take a motion for Mrs. Hubley to approve, seconded by Mr. Regoli. We approve it. Thank you so much.
Thank you all.
Good evening. Thank you for coming and presenting Atlantic's School Improvement Plan.
Thank you so much for helping us. Good evening, Superintendent Mulvey, members of the school committee. Thank you so much for the opportunity to present Atlantic Middle School's School Improvement Plan.
Can you hear me now?
Oh, great.
All right. Thank you so much for the opportunity to present Atlantic Middle School's School Improvement Plan for the 2024-2025 academic year. Assistant Principal Roy and I are excited to be here tonight to share Atlantic's progress, present our plan, and answer all of your questions. Atlantic remains committed to fostering academic excellence, a supportive school culture, and a thriving community for all of our diverse students. I am proud to share that this year has begun with positive momentum, and you will see that our plan builds upon the successes and the lessons of the previous school year. Looking back at last school year from a data perspective, Atlantic Middle School students matched or exceeded state and district averages on the MCAS in most subjects and grades. We achieved our ELA goal, which focused on increases in writing. Our sixth grade did exceptionally well in comparison to the state. We were really pleased that we showed increases in our geometry score on the math MCAS, likely due to our targeted action steps and innovative instructional strategies. Grade eight science scores were strong as well, particularly in the areas of technology engineering and science practices. Our commitment to fostering a positive school culture has also yielded measurable results through our vocal data. Last year's survey revealed significant improvements in areas such as mutual respect amongst students, adherence to classroom expectations, and teacher support for students facing challenges. This is a really positive reflection of our staff's ongoing dedication to creating a respectful and inclusive learning environment. In reflecting on the year from a non-data perspective, we really had a wonderful year with the partnerships through Arbella Insurance and the Boston Celtics. We had our first experience with the All-Star Attendance Initiative, which was really a lot of fun for everyone. As you may know from other schools, the program started and ended with large, party-like events where students were able to meet Celtics players and be active, and during the months in between, students were rewarded with pretty neat prizes for their exceptional attendance. It was wonderful to see students so conscientious about coming to school, proudly bringing in doctor's notes to keep their attendance streaks. To supplement the program, we did periodic homeroom versus homeroom attendance challenges, or chose the most improved attendance winners randomly, and offered an extra gym period or small gift cards. While we don't have visits this year from Lucky or player Jordan Walsh, we have been able to keep our attendance momentum going with weekly raffle prizes, friendly homeroom competitions, and one-to-one check-ins, and individualized support for students we are concerned about with a preferred adult. We were also able to reward the grade six class one day this year when all of our 203 students were present. We played music at lunch, and it was the most fun lunch experience that they had ever had. They were so proud of themselves and surprised to have such an exciting reward. As you can see in our goal number four, we are committed to maintaining our high attendance data through these school-wide practices, as well as employing personalized check-ins with students whose attendance is concerning. In addition to the Celtics helping our students get to school, we were able to be part of a competition called Fit for a Cause through Boston Scientific. We brought several students to the Celtics' practice facility to learn about nutrition and fitness with player Derrick White, and then, due to our competitive spirit, we won the overall contest due to our participation in virtual workouts. Our prize was the Admiral Fit Zone, a new workout space off of our gym. It is equipped with floor-to-ceiling mirrors, Bluetooth speakers, weight benches, and free weights, some cardio equipment, and a mounted resistance band system. One of the walls has a huge photograph of the TD Garden, signed by Lucky and Brian Scalabrine, who were present to work out with our students on a very special opening day. The hard work of our students and staff really paid off, and we are so thankful to have been part of the program during such a historic year for the Celtics.
Last year, I spearheaded additional initiatives, including a mentoring program for grade seven students, as well as nine Saturday school sessions for students who needed additional support to help them achieve success in the classroom. These programs yielded personal success for many students. It is clear that students greatly benefit from positive relationships in their life, and it is wonderful to see their progress and also hold them accountable for work completion. It is our hope that these relationships will continue to lead to increase in academic performance, self-esteem, and emotional development. In helping to improve students' social-emotional development, we have continued to reflect on and improve our school-wide efforts to build community. In January, our EL team organized an Asian Lunar New Year Fair, where grade six students participated in activities and crafts led by our English learner students. During our AMP period, students engaged in activities celebrating Black History Month, Women's History Month, Mental Health Awareness Month, Pride Month, and Juneteenth, fostering awareness and inclusivity. awareness and inclusivity. We know that students will want to come to school and participate in academics when they feel comfortable and have something or someone who motivates them. As described above, our social, emotional and DEI endeavors are designed with that in mind, to have all students feel like they belong at Atlantic and feel supported by all the adults in the building. Another area where we shine is making connections with students and helping them to find that thing that will get them to school. Student Council hosts a variety of Spirit Week dress-up days throughout the year, which encourages students to be creative. Our extended day activities last year had excellent participation, including some new offerings like Korean Club, volleyball and basketball clinics and even a Super Smash Brothers tournament. Our students graced the stage during our school musical Moana and our chorus and band students performed masterfully at our winter and spring concerts. Lining the halls throughout the year is artwork created by our very talented and inspired students. Our sports teams, cross-country, tennis, volleyball, swimming and track and field were excellent and we had even better sportsmanship. It is always a pleasure to attend sporting events. Students were constantly in attendance cheering on their classmates. Our robotics team did very well at fall and spring competitions as well, as well and enjoyed the entire process.
So how are things going this year? From a social emotional perspective, we're continuing to reflect on student interests and have tried to incorporate games and art into our monthly school-wide activities. We started off this school year with students creating personal goals and writing them on a paper shoe, think Nikes and Chuck Taylors, so that they can take steps towards achieving them. Students have learned how to play Loteria, the Mexican version of bingo during Hispanic Heritage Month and last year they, last week they played the Bean Game, which is a traditional Native American game of chance that also involves a little bit of math as November is Native American Heritage Month. We look forward to additional activities and educational games throughout the next two trimesters. Through the leadership from our incredible guidance department and the health educator, we are also continuing our school-wide programs and practices like open parachute and community circles, which foster emotional support and peer respect. This year, we are also adding initiatives such as the Sandy Hook Promises Start With Hello program and expanding mental health education through partnerships with organizations like the NAN Project. Additionally, we are thrilled that the district's partnership with Quarry Quinzeation Resources has enabled us to have a clinician onsite weekly and we also have three interns working with our guidance staff who meet with students for additional check-ins. It is clear that our students need different levels of social emotional support and we are working hard to meet their needs. Additionally, this Wednesday, we will be hosting our additional Healthy Choices Day, during which students will participate in a variety of physical, team building, competitive, trivia and community service related activities. Our staff continues to take a look at the students in front of them and plan activities such as this with a combination of tried and true Atlantic traditions as well as activities with a new twist. We're really excited for the morning. In our classrooms, enhancing students' writing proficiency is our central academic focus, as you can see from our goals. Writing is not only a key skill for academic achievement, but also a critical tool for real-world communication. As you can see in our plan, all of our academic goals include writing as a primary or secondary focus, ensuring that students practice and refine their skills in every class. ELA and reading teachers have received some training regarding writing revolution strategies and content area teachers will receive training in January. It is our hope that this will help with student output. In English classes, we have implemented new graphic organizers to help students craft paragraph and essays in a more systematic way to keep their writing organized and full of detail. Our English learner teachers implement writing activities with our English learners on a daily basis, including step-by-step modeling and sentence frames and the implementation of their new curriculum called time zones will aid with building their confidence and competence. These are often students with the biggest potential for growth and our EL and general education staff are working really hard to help them find additional successes. In our social studies classes, grade eight students will be responding in writing to questions that are related to student rights and responsibilities, which is going to be the primary focus for the new civics MCAS test this spring. So our SMART goal for ELA is to see a 3% increase in the writing component of the ELA MCAS test. And as you can see, we'll be working hard throughout the year, building achievement towards that goal. Writing is also at the core of our math and science action steps. In our math classes, we are emphasizing constructed response questions to strengthen problem-solving and analytical skills. Math teachers have participated in professional development over the past year regarding building thinking classrooms and they have been excited to implement some of the learned strategies such as randomized groups and removable whiteboards in order to increase student engagement and learning. In classrooms, Ms. Roy and I consistently hear teachers asking students to explain how they arrive at an answer and what the actual answer actually means. In science, our students will participate in hands-on learning experiences around phenomena and then they will apply academic writing, academic language in writing to explain what is happening based on the evidence in front of them. For example, we have students who are currently experimenting with plastic cups, seeing which ones may keep drinks colder or warmer and then writing about which features contribute to the changing or static temperature. All of our teachers are working tirelessly, extremely hard every day to create these wonderful learning experiences. They really are masters of their craft. All of these efforts are designed to not only improve test scores, but also empower students to think critically and communicate effectively, skills that will serve them long beyond the middle school or even high school classroom. In the age of typing initialisms with thumbs, we are striving for students to write solid paragraphs with a paper and pencil, complete with a claim, evidence and some proper punctuation. We're making progress every day. Additionally, this year, we have strengthened our family engagement through events like our first cultural fair earlier this month, which celebrated the rich diversity of our community and showcased student learning. We hosted a tea for teachers with our English learner families earlier this fall and we look forward to additional family engagement activities throughout the year. Our very active and supportive PAC has some exciting events planned for 2025 that aim to encourage participation from a variety of families. In closing, Atlantic Middle School's Improvement Plan balances academic rigor, targeted interventions and a strong commitment to fostering a connected community. With a clear focus on writing, we are equipping students with the tools that they need to excel in school and in life. So thank you for your continued support and partnership in our shared mission of educational excellence. We welcome your questions and look forward to working together to support Atlantic's successes.
Mr. Rigoli.
Thank you, Ms. Lebo. Just kudos to you and your school. Every parent that I've come in contact with talks about Atlantic, has nothing but good things to say about it. And that's across the board for everything. And I'm really impressed with the attendance effort that you guys have made and I'd like to see it system-wide. But again, just a great job and really, really pleased with what's going on down there.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
Mrs. Hubley.
Thank you. I agree with Mr. Rigoli. I've heard only great things, so congratulations on what you're doing. It's great. Your goals are wonderful. I love your extended day offerings and your cultural experiences offerings are wonderful. That's just great what you're doing there for that as well. So you're saying we're going to be moving the facilities, things into facilities and most of your budgetary items will go into budget, but there are a couple I just wanted to point out as if they were potential safety concerns. So the PA system included with the classroom phones, I see that's something that's been asked for, for a while. Is that something that's being worked on or is that a safety issue at all or is that?
It's not a safety issue. It's something that we would love to have. You know, currently we have a PA system in the office where we can buzz into individual classrooms and, you know, ask for things, but everyone in the classroom is able to hear. So if there needed to be a more discreet message, it would be helpful to have phones. However, we, we do have two legs and we can walk up to classrooms, that is just fine. So it's definitely not a safety concern.
Okay. And the ramp for the front door?
The ramp for the front door would be excellent. We have another door at the front of the building where it, that is handicap accessible. We've found that our front door, because there is like a little step to get in the building, at arrival, at dismissal, when the visitors are in the building, they don't always see the steps and we've added signage, but I think ramps would be really helpful.
Okay.
Yeah.
And to backtrack a little bit on the, a page with the space for your classroom size, could you touch a little bit on, on, I see that you are getting a sixth grade teacher in progress for that.
Correct.
So the other classrooms that are, how, how's that going with the other classrooms that are on the larger end?
They're large. They're, they're large. We have enough desks, enough chairs. We are, we're doing, we're doing the best with, with what we have at the moment. You know, an additional sixth grade teacher will make the class sizes more manageable and enable the staff to work more individually with teachers, sorry, with students. This new teacher will most likely, for this year, travel from classroom to classroom until over the summer, we're able to really figure out what our needs will be for the upcoming year and, and figure out if, what other room might need to be transformed to a classroom.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, of course.
Mrs. Kaye Hall.
Thank you. You did make a comment about the school's competitive nature.
A little bit.
I think it, I think it's the principal's competitive nature.
Oh, no.
From what I, from what I see. You know, on your facilities, you had about the auditorium, the seats and the lighting. I came to the play last year and the seats, you know, aren't the most comfortable, but I think the issue that I experienced last year was mostly the audio.
Yeah.
Did you have that? Has that been taken care of? Because it's not on this list here, but.
Not yet, no.
Okay.
Yes.
You might want to add that.
I might want to add that, yes.
Because that was probably the biggest barrier, I think, to enjoying the show, which was great.
Yes.
But I think that made it a little more difficult and I didn't see it here, so you might want to put that one there.
I will, thank you.
The other thing that I, I was wondering, so when you're asking for additional ELL support, in, in what capacity would that be? Like what would you, what would you ultimately like to see?
I mean, another teacher would be amazing, but no, if, I know in the past, there have been some tutors that have gone from building to building. It would be really ideal to have some sort of support that could pull small groups of students. You know, some of our Level One, like our newcomers to the country, those classes are definitely larger than we would like. And so trying to, you know, pull students so that they can have that individualized support.
So is that, is a para, are there paras that can do this work or is it mostly, so it's actually going to be a budget thing?
He just has to be the right person.
And I'm sure you have discussed it amongst each other both.
Yeah. I mean, I think ideally we could do a tutor. I don't think a para would really, you know, do what Eliza and the staff want, you know, need. But I think that she does have large classes and I think, you know, it's just a consideration for future budget that I think they're doing okay right now, but we said you wanted to see their needs and let's, you know, put it out there and so I think that it's definitely something we need to look at as we plan for.
So I mean, it's good for us to see, but I think it's mostly important for you to see that this is a need for them so that you can kind of think about it when we're doing budgets and things like that.
Yeah, we definitely agree. Eliza and I have talked many times about it. You know, she's, she has large EL numbers and it, you know, it continues to grow right now.
Yeah. And this is basically, it's mostly, and I probably should know this answer and it's not specific to one school. You know, when we look at incident reports and different schools have different numbers and I wouldn't, I don't like to compare schools to each other because of different demographics and the things that happen in their, in their buildings, but do we have like a policy or is there some kind of criteria? How do we determine, you know, one principal might determine an incident is more, you know, should be listed as an incident and have a more consequence than another? Do we have criteria that we use that's, that every school uses to determine, you know?
That's actually a great question and we're actually going to do a whole presentation on that because I know that's been a concern of the committee for a bit. And so there are, you know, I'll give you the short answer right now and we'll go into a lot more detail when we do the presentation. But there are, the data that you see in the School Improvement Plan is from what's called the SSDR report. And so there are things that are required by the state that need to be reported. And so that's what, so there's a lot of things that happen in a school. Not everything is stuff that needs to be necessarily reported. But this is, so the incidents that you see, and we'll talk about what those are and what that means, but that is what that is, that it's, it's actually required by the state. So they follow, you know, it gets put into Aspen, they're coded and then it gets reported to the state.
Okay. Okay, great. So we'll wait for that, that kind of, that was mostly what I was, you know, I didn't want it to be something that what I think is an incident and then what she thinks might be an incident and has, have it be something different and that would be reflective in the numbers, you know?
Absolutely.
Okay, and I think that's it for me. Thank you, thank you.
Mr. Guthrie.
Thank you for your plan, for your presentation and your good work. I just have one question. And in your Principal's Path letter, you had a reflection that said under Goal Three, didn't meet the metric in science for lower performing students in 24-25. And so my question is, is that the same metric in, in this year or 23-24? Is that the same metric in this year and are there any different action steps to help those students?
Yeah, great question. So, again, competitive spirit. We, we have been meeting our goals for, you know, a certain number of years. And so last year, when we were looking at our science, we tried to do something a little bit different. We tried to take, like our goal was to take our lower performing students and kind of advance them, you know, towards meeting proficiency. And we did it in a, in the area of physical science, which is something that not, is not necessarily covered at each grade level. However, the MAP test, which was our metric, is, is a six through eight test. So all students were being assessed on something that they might not necessarily have learned in class. So we tweaked our metric, you know, this year so that, to use overall MAP data, understanding that, you know, it will be more manageable to meet. And in terms of the action steps, we really are excited about Open SciEd as a new curriculum and so we're, we're looking forward to, you know, exploring that more and then, you know, after we learn a little bit more, having more targeted action steps even, you know, regarding that in the future.
Great. Look forward to hearing next year how it goes. Thank you.
No problem, thanks.
Mrs. Prodeos.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation and the plan. I, you know, knew you as an assistant principal at Point and always, you know, so strong and organized and I'm not surprised that this plan was so strong and organized. The scores are amazing. The test scores really are outstanding. Chronic absenteeism numbers are great and just hearing about how you're encouraging the students and welcoming them and kind of basically putting a lot of these DEI efforts and these creative ways, you're kind of bringing it all together throughout the students' kind of daily life at Atlantic. It's not just, we're going to do this one intervention, it's kind of part of the culture there and I really liked hearing about that, I appreciated that. And I think that's really how you make those inroads in the vocal, to addressing some of that vocal numbers that actually are really good already at your school. So thank you for being so creative in incorporating those. And I appreciate your honesty and candidness around the class sizes because I would love to see us support that. You're doing great work there and I'd love to see us be able to get those numbers down for you so those kiddos can get a little more individual attention with the teachers that are trying so hard. I'd love to see the Fit Zone. I, I'm really, I'm excited that you got it. I'm, I'm a fitness instructor part-time and, and just the, it's not just about, it's, it's also just an outlet for kids too, to kind of be able to work off any stress or any anxiety they're feeling. And I think that that also goes to a lot of our DEI, even chronic absenteeism stuff. So I think that's a fantastic opportunity on that and I'm glad.
Can I interrupt you for one second?
Yeah, please, go ahead.
So we, we have an after-school club called Working With Weights that started as a result of this and one of our sixth grade math teachers has a group of students that if you looked at them, you'd be like, didn't know you were into working out with weights. And they come every Tuesday and Thursday, they're like, today is leg day, I can't wait. And they're very, very excited to, to take advantage of the space and, and, you know, just learn about physical fitness, which again, you're right, social, emotional, mental health, it's all, it's all connected. So, you know, it's nice to have that as a space for PE classes, but then also for, you know, our morning gym program as well as the new weightlifting club.
Oh, for sure. And I think it's intimidating to go into a gym.
Yes.
As a, as a teenager and, and not know what you're doing and. As a, as a teenager and, and not know what you're doing and, and this is a space just for them, and I think that's fantastic. So I'd love to see that expanded if, if we can. I mean, I'm glad you got that opportunity. I'd love for that at all of our middle schools, but that's a story for another day. I am glad Mrs. Cahill brought up about the sound in your auditorium. Moana was fantastic. I think it's not, you're not alone in needing help with your sound system, so, and they're super expensive and I get that. But getting it on there on our radar is great. And I think your focus on writing is fantastic. I'm finding with my kids at high school, the writing demand increases and the expectation of being able to write a solid essay is certainly there. So the better the foundation they can go into high school with, the better. So I love that that is kind of, you know, prolific across all of your goals. So love that. I think you're doing a great job. And thank you both, and your teachers as well.
Thank you, Mrs. Prodeos. I have a couple of very quick questions. I agree with everything that's been said. Your numbers look great. I have one question about the numbers, but the numbers are really good. Your goals are terrific. On page thirteen, on number eight, it says, create and administer a mid-year and year-end student and staff surveys. So who's going to create those?
Me.
And who's going to help you?
Yeah.
And who's going to check and make sure that there really is, I mean, I think we have a data person in the room. Maybe he should take a look at that survey before it goes out. What do you think? Yeah, you could do that?
Yeah.
I mean, I, I could make a survey up too.
Yeah. Yeah, no, I mean, we, the, it was a simple survey, you know, one to five. How do you feel about these activities? Any feedback for us? And we did it, you know, in the, in January and then again in June and.
I think it's a great idea. I'd love to see it. I just think that we've been, we've been down this road before where survey questions didn't really elicit what we were hoping to get from them. And so it would be nice just to make sure the data guy was on.
It was number.
But I really do like, I really do like your goals. Class size was a concern of mine as well. And your enrollment, so the sixth grade is, is high. And then seventh grade is going to be high next year. So we're going to have to really start paying attention to that because if the sixth grade stays anywhere near where it is, that's a whole new class, right? And that's going to just keep moving up. So, and I, and I get that how many of those students are probably EL or FEL. They're going to need some support. Progress towards, your goals are great though, I think. I think your accountability data is great. That's the one question I had, and it's not necessarily just for you. I had it for everybody. It seems like our EL stuff, we've declined in almost every school. I wish I had had.
Yeah, that's why we did make that a district goal. It's, it's pretty much a goal, I think. Throughout the district, we actually talked, you know, when we met with the principals, we talked about that because we did. I, I think it's almost every school. I would have to double check, but it, it is definitely a concern. And I think that the, we are seeing, like we said, an influx of newcomers, the, the population just is changing and we have to adapt.
I know. And you have 166 kids taking advanced classes, classwork there.
We do.
And the diversity is pretty good among those kids. So congratulations. You have some of the best diversity in those programs. So I'm going to entertain a motion by Mr. Bogoli to accept the plan, seconded by Mrs. Hubley, and you are all set. Thank you so much.
Thanks so much. Have a great evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening. It's an honor to be here tonight on behalf of the faculty and staff of Point Webster Middle School to present our 2024-2025 School Improvement Plan. It's a pleasure to work with such a caring and dedicated staff as well as a PTO and school council that supports our students and their families. Before I begin, I would like to introduce our new assistant principal this year, Mr. Michael Lorenzano. Mr. Michael Lorenzano grew up in Quincy Point, began his career in the Quincy Public Schools as a teacher and coach at Quincy High School, and then a health teacher at Point Webster, and now as an administrator. I'm so excited to have him by my side this evening and am very proud, as a former teacher of his, to see how he's grown, not only as a young man, but as an educator and an administrator. I know I'm aging myself, but it was worth, it was worth it. Point Webster is a diverse school comprised of 377 students in grades five through eight. We recently welcomed the district's substantially separate pass program to our school this year. Point prides itself on building a community that instills students with a sense of belonging. Our faculty and staff works to build positive relationships with our students and their families. Our goal each year is to continue to build this culture and climate at our school and provide our students with opportunities to help them grow, not just educationally, but to be positive citizens in the community and beyond. So how did we develop Point Webster Middle School's School Improvement Plan? By collaboration and working as a team. We have Principal Path meetings by grade level and content area. We meet at our assessment days. We have assessment team members. As a staff, we analyze both MAP and MCAS data as well as classroom assessments. We check to see if we meet our goals. We look at what the data shows and what our strengths and weaknesses are. We look at previous year's action steps throughout the school year to inform instruction as well as our MAP data. At our additional assessment days, we look at this data and through monthly Principal's Path meetings, we monitor, adjust, adapt, and adopt new action steps as needed. The data is clear that we have several key areas to work on moving forward. And as always, our goal is to provide students with the support and tools needed to be successful. A brief synopsis of our 23, 22, 2023-2024 school goals and what we achieved can be found on page seven. Our ELA goal, the data above, the data on that page above showed that we increased our vocabulary instructional strand in all grades and met our goals in grades five and eight. On a side note, our data showed that we were above the state in the essay question type in both grades seven and eight, as well as above the state in all items for MCAS in grades seven and eight. Also on page seven, our second smart goal, mathematics. The data showed that we exceeded our math goal for the 2023-2024 school year. Our RIT scores in the concentrated areas showed significant growth in grades five, six, seven, and eight. Double digits actually in three out of our four grades, which is amazing. We believe that this can be attributed to ST Math, our math interventionists, as well as the beginning of the implementation of ST Math and Math Challenge Days in grade seven.
Next, I'd like to talk a little bit about our Science, Technology, and Engineering goal. Although we showed an increase in every grade on our RIT scores from fall to spring, we only met our goal with our grade five students. In addition, with the changes to the design and the STE-MCAST test, we kept our goal the same for grades six through eight and adjusted to five RIT points for grade five for this school year. Moving on to our social emotional learning goal. We were able to meet our social emotional learning goal by updating our PBIS manual informed for the 2023-2024 school year. In addition, we implemented a minimum of at least three open parachute lessons in each grade as a result of utilizing our student exit responses as measurement. These lessons occurred not only in some of our health classes, but also through our student support block classes. Also, our attendance incentive last year through the Boston Celtics partnership assisted us in receiving the maximum number of points towards chronic absenteeism in our MCAS accountability data.
This brings us to this year's goals as a school. After careful analysis of MCAS and MAP data, the ELA team identified the literary text strand as an area of focus for 24, for the 2024-2025 school year. We observed that our students struggled with the key ideas and detail strand in all grades and writing in our lower grades. We also noticed a decline in our EL/MCAS student scores. If you look at page 12, action steps two and three have been revised to address English language acquisition and reading comprehension. And step four, to assist our younger students with reading and writing stamina. Step six, supporting our students by assisting them with reading strategies. And we are also happy to begin the implementation of our new National Geographic Invistas ELE curriculum. We've also implemented new action steps 10 through 16 to provide interventions and supports for all students. We continue to work on improving our math scores in all areas. Our math team identified grade-specific areas to concentrate, concentrate on via MAP testing. These areas were also identified as areas needing improvement with MCAS as well. I'm excited to inform you that not only are we continuing with our ST Math grant, but we have obtained a small group targeted instruction grant for our grade eight students. This grant enables students to receive online tutoring three days a week for 30 minutes per day on math content that, that these eighth graders are struggling in. In addition, we recently created our ST Math Student Mentor Crew to work with our younger students for additional math support. New and revised action steps reflecting our math goal, our action steps 10, 11, and 13 through 15.
Moving on to science. Although we showed an increase in every grade on our science RIT scores from fall to spring, we only met our goal with our grade five students. In addition, with the changes to the design and the STE-MCAST test, we kept our goal the same for grades six through eight and adjusted to five RIT points for grade five for this school year. You will notice in action step number five that Point Webster currently has grade eight science teacher Michelle Kunniff serving as a member of the STEM Ambassador Program to create and pilot high-quality standards aligned with tasks to illustrate shifts in standards connected to the Massachusetts NGSS as well as facilitate the Point Science Content Team to assist Point staff with lessons relative to the new STE-MCAST design. In addition, we have two teachers piloting Open SciEd this year, and our technology teacher Lisa Chin is leading the way in the Project Lead the Way community where she received assisted QPS in winning the PLTW Student Work Co. Onto the next goal, our SEL goal. We, in creating our SEL goal, we utilize our vocal data to assist in our action steps. We began our monthly grade-level assemblies where we celebrate attendance, students of the month, and not only go over our school-wide monthly themes, but we also have the ability to implement open parachute lessons there or in our SSB class time. We also look forward to our new Sandy Hook Promise Program Assembly coming up in December.
Next, our extended day activities. Point Webster prides itself with numerous extended day activities. On page 25, you will see a great variety of before and after-school programs for our students to participate in this year. Our staff is dedicated to providing these activities based on student interests. This year, we were excited to add soccer, specifically girls' soccer, as they've asked us to have their own time on the turf field. And immediately, several staff members stepped up to run this new program. We are also very excited to have started our Navigators Who Code program run by our technology teacher Lisa Chin, who has recently received a grant to bring opportunities to girls who code at Point Webster. Lastly, keeping with inclusion, a majority of our past students are participating in our extended day activities, and we thank the Quincy Public Schools Transportation Department for working with us on adjusting pickup times for our past students. In addition, we pride ourselves on communicating with families. As you can see on page 27, family engagement and communication, we have several school-wide modes of communication that keep our school community informed. For example, our parent and guardian newsletters are sent weekly and trimester curriculum newsletters, which both have the ability to be translated for all, for all our families through smore. In addition, these can also be found on our school website. We also build our school culture and climate through school-wide events, such as our annual cultural fair, our school concert, our school concerts, a band of over 80 students, our STEM fair, our in-school events such as our Healthy Choices and Spirit Day, which is coming up this week, Point Pride Week events, and our combined Point Webster and Clifford Marshall Family Fun Run. This year, we've also partnered with Stop &amp; Shop to open Point's Grab and Go Food Pantry, run by our own student council and their facilitators, Lisa Chin and Dominique Lushir. Each month, we provide groceries for over 50 families in need. We are also working with Santa's Helpers, a local organization, to assist 15 to 20 families for the holiday season. We pride ourselves in helping the community and our families in need. We also want to thank you for attending our recent dedication and naming of the turf field at Point Webster in honor of Private John Mariano. We had a windy, but great morning, and we were able to dedicate our field in memory of a former Point student who died at the age of 20 fighting for his country during the Korean War. Lastly, we thank all of you for your continued support of Point Webster Middle School and the Quincy Point community. Point Webster is truly a special place that we are both proud to be a part of. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? Mrs. Hubley. Mr. Bogoli, I'm sorry.
You're talking about dating yourself with Mr. Lorenzano?
I know. He used to give me ice creams from the ice cream truck. I remember those days too, Mr. Bogoli.
And I'm not that tall, and you came up to my chest, so. That was a long time ago. It's really nice to see two people who have come through the Quincy Public Schools now leading one of our schools, Christine and Mike. Again, remember Christine is a young, a young student and a great athlete at Quincy High School. And Mr. Lorenzano as well, running around with the Quincy Point Panthers, and also a great athlete at Quincy High. But it, Point Webster is in great hands with the two of you. And I'm really pleased to let people know that Christine is probably one of the hardest working educators I've ever, ever had the pleasure of knowing. So kudos to you guys and keep up the good work. I see great things going forward at Point Webster.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bogoli. Mrs. Hubley.
Thank you so much, your presentation. I love your, your goals are great and very thoughtful steps incorporated in there. And we're going to be moving the facilities and the, to facility subcommittee and the school needs to, what's budgeted, move to budget. I don't see anything that really looks like a safety concern except for boiler replacements. Is there a plan for that?
I'm sorry, for what?
The boiler replacement. Do we have a plan in place?
I believe it was going to happen this year, but there was some tie-up with it. And I believe it's happening, I think, in the springtime.
Mr. Moby.
It's going to be part of our Accelerator Repair Program with the School Building Authority, which is great. But there is backlog of boilers. And so we'll get whatever, we'll, we'll get everything we need and hopefully get it done as quickly as possible. But certainly, I think, this summer for sure, if not sooner. But the boiler right now should be good, should be good for the rest of the year.
All so good. Everything's going well.
So, but Paul Hines is on it. Thank you.
And also the security cameras installed outside and inside. I see that was on the 2023-24 and still on there now. Do we have a plan for that as well?
I know we, we, we did, weren't we writing a grant, I thought, but I don't know if we were able to secure funds for that.
The security cameras, I think that that's.
Improvement for the entire district, and I know the mayor is putting together a plan with Paul Hines to do obviously a district-wide upgrade for our security cameras. That would include potential PA systems as well as part of the security plan, as well as other items. And I know that the mayor would like to have the security assessment team in to address that with you in executive session, so you know the details of the plan and how it will be rolled out. But obviously, the idea would be to get all of those systems across the district up to state-of-the-art systems in all of our schools. And so that rollout will be based on the report that our security assessment team did. And then, of course, there'll be contingent on funding from the city and the city council. So it is a very large and costly plan. That's why it has to be done through the capital improvement process through the city.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that their cameras were included in that.
Their cameras as well as all the districts will be in that plan as well.
Okay, great. And lastly, I don't see the geography be in here.
I know. They don't do it anymore nationally. We, we did it last year just for you.
I love, I have gone.
So you know.
I think I've gone all 14 years, I think.
Our social studies teachers created all the questions themselves.
So sad to hear that.
And we made our own competition up because we know how much you like it.
I love the geography.
But then this year, we were like, do we do it? Do we not do it?
All right, well, that.
I'll talk to them about that.
I'm devastated. I am absolutely devastated. Thank you very much for your plan.
Thank you.
Mrs. Cahill.
So you want to feel old? I said Michael went to school with one of my girls, so don't say how old you are. I just had one question. Everything looks great. You're doing a great job there. I love the school. I, I had the opportunity to come last year and take a tour, and I think it's a great building, you know, structurally, and it's special. How many languages? I don't see it in here, and I'm sure.
Thirty-two. I just looked it up before I came, and I was going to mention it. We're up, yeah, last year was 27. Now we're at 32 different languages spoken at our school.
And I knew it was a huge number because you, you had mentioned it last year. So I think, I think we all need to understand that, you know, the, the succession. I think we all need to understand that, you know, the the success you're having with your scores and, you know, your academics and the culture at the school is really something special in light of the diversity in the building and the language, the different languages, thirty-two different languages that are primary languages for your students. So thank you for for this, and, you know, it's gonna be a good year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Perutius?
Thank you. So I'm lucky. I feel like a broken record here, but I'm going to echo Mr. Bogoli's comments. And I'm lucky enough to have had, my kids have had, four of the five middle school principals that are going to be here before us. And Principal Barrett is fantastic, another one who has been just great, really strong leader, really keeps the building, you know, in check, running smooth, really, really strong leadership. So I'm grateful that she's there. And Mr. Lorenzano, while Hannah misses you as her health teacher, you know, we're all excited that you're in this role, and I think you're going to be fantastic. And you're already doing a great job. So appreciate that, both of you. And the communication you have with parents, I know firsthand, your PTO, you stay at the PTO meetings for, and if you think I ask a lot of questions, my husband asks a lot too, and he's the PTO president. So those meetings are not short. And Principal Barrett and Mr. Lorenzano have stayed and answered everything and always reaching out and trying to be collaborative with parents. So I wanted to make sure the body knew that how how family engagement oriented both of these guys are. So I appreciate that. Couple questions for you. I noticed in here, Chat G P T, it was on under your professional development plan, it looks like it's going to be starting to be integrated a little bit. And I didn't know if you had any details or might wanted to talk, talk a little bit about like what that looks like. It's probably the first time I've seen, seen it as be be part of the plan.
I know other middle schools have have done some some P D around that as well. And and we're looking forward to to helping our students, in particular, our E L students. And in order to do that, we need to train our staff. And through the Q P S Professional Day of Learning, I was able to see firsthand some of the things that can be done to help our students in class each and every day. A lot of our teachers are already incorporating different languages in their lesson plans to accommodate our students and to help our students and support our students. But there's a little more that you can do. And we're going to spend a day, myself and one of our English Language Arts teachers, Kim Delisle, are going to be doing some P D coming up. I think it's January. That was the earliest we could get there. And and we're going to train our staff in utilizing that in various subject areas to help our students perform and support them through the, I mean, just think about what it's like coming to a school and not knowing how to speak the language and being in classes that are only spoken in English. It's, I can't even, I would cry every day. So I think these kids are amazing, and we want to help them through this process and make them better students and help them learn the language and make them members of our community that are contributing and and being, you know, comfortable and feeling safe at school. And in order to do that, we're going to meet them where they are. So that's our plan.
It's fantastic that we're using those tools. So thank you for incorporating that. The S T math mentor crew, I was curious about that.
Yes.
I was wondering kind of where that came from, what, how are the kids trained? Is it to give them more practice, or is it to give them practice at being leaders? What's kind of the?
So our eighth graders, so they're they're no longer utilizing S T math the way the fifth, sixth, and seventh are. So our math interventionists met with our eighth graders and asked if any of them wanted to volunteer their time during SSB or before school or after school to kind of help the younger students get acclimated to S T math and to kind of push them into solving their puzzles. And we have a S T math challenge, turkey turkey challenge going on right now where they are putting feathers on Gigi for every, you know, so many puzzles, their SSB class gets a a feather on Gigi, and the class with the most feathers gets to have a special SSB day with Ms. Quigley and the other staff members. So they're excited. They're checking the board every day outside the office to see how many feathers Gigi has and which homeroom, or which, excuse me, which SSB teacher is is on there. So it's cute. And the mentor crew has been excited. They've been coming down and helping kids get on board and and kind of pushing them to continue to do their puzzles and be and be supported and successful at it.
That's great. I I any chance we can have to have kids help out and and give back and be tutored, I think that's great. Quick question on, so while the math map scores were were met, and they looked really good, the, I was just noticing the MCAS math data were a little rough. So I was just wondering if you thought it might be helpful to incorporate any of the, any MCAS data into your goals? I noticed most of the goals are just map focused. Do you think it might be helpful to incorporate any of them?
We we could change a goal to to include that, but all of our goals, they may be map oriented, but if you look at the action steps, they're also for growth in all areas, especially some of those areas in in MCAS that we struggled in. That's why we actually kept geometry on there for a couple of our grades, because although we did very, very well in map, some of the domains and strands with the geometry were not as as positive. So we we are continuing to, you know, utilize both MCAS data and map data, but we've kept the goals to map. We could always add, and in addition, MCAS data too, but I wasn't sure. It becomes very wordy, so I wasn't.
Only if you think it's helpful, you know, that's, and I know we talk a lot at PTO meetings about how it's difficult when we take that kind of top academic group and we're sending them to the APC program, and that actually does reflect in the other middle schools' MCAS scores maybe not being quite as strong. Because of that, you're taking that kind of top group out, even though we still have advanced learners at each middle school. So I was just curious what your thoughts are on that. And the last thing I wanted to mention, well, one, one thing I wanted to mention is I'm excited that the Fun Run is part of your SEL goal, although I did notice it was Fun Run in quotes, like maybe, maybe, do you think it's fun? Do you think it's fun, right?
Well, I've been known to be, I've been known to be very competitive, so I had to kind of bring down the competitive nature. Paul can tell you.
And just the last thing I wanted to mention, which is not a reflection on you at all, you house fifth graders, only two of the middle schools house fifth graders. And I just wanted to highlight on the vocal data that fifth graders, this is at the end of their fifth grade year, thirty-eight percent stated that older students scare or pick on younger students. And I just wanted to say that that's, you know, kind of actionable because these are the, so fifth graders in elementary school that are answering that question are in a position where they're the oldest, but these fifth graders are the youngest. So I just want to point that out and highlight that, that we do have fifth graders in a situation with older students. And, you know, we're having a district-wide kind of problem with students respecting each other. And I think that that is just important to mention, where we have ten-year-olds in a building with with these older kids. So just wanted to mention that. And but I appreciate all you both do. You're a fantastic school, and I'm glad my kids are going there. Thanks.
Mr. Gettrum?
When your last year, questions are asked and your, the comments made, but I just want to welcome Mr. Lorenzano for the first year, and thank Christine for all the work that she does. Appreciate all you've done over the years.
Thank you, and thank you all for your support.
I have a couple of questions for you.
The chair gets it.
You're not done yet.
I was gonna say, you're not done.
No one. You're not done yet.
Sorry.
I feel like I'm back at Quincy High with the two of you. It's been some, it's been a while. I just have a couple of very brief questions. I I really do like your goals. I know that they're map-oriented. I saw in your action steps. I'm concerned about the MCAS scores, but you do show growth in your map scores. And so you're taking kids from where you get them, and you're moving them along. So I'm good with that, you know, I'm a much bigger believer in map scores than I am in the MCAS scores anyway. I've just, this is like kind of a ridiculous question, but what is the D E A E F dance?
The Drug Enforcement Agency comes in, they run a dance program, a youth dance program. Basically, Katie is our our leader. They come from New York, and they come from all over, and they do a a dance, like a hip-hop dance program, and they meet with all the fifth graders. We just recently had them here, I want to say, two weeks ago, and we just started the program again this year. And they come and they do a free program for twenty-five students in grade five, and they learn how to to dance, and they learn about, you know, their different parts of their body, being safe. And and they put on a show for the entire fifth grade, and their parents come in, and they absolutely love it. So when I was the principal over at what is now Southwest Sterling, we started it there. And then they contacted me when I was over at Point Webster. I said, I'd love to have you back. The kids absolutely love it. I am no longer dancing with them, but I told them if they get lucky, they might get me up on the stage maybe for their end of the year performance.
Mike can do that.
Yeah, I might be able to pass it off to Mike. But it's a, it's an after-school youth dance program, and the kids learn hip-hop, and they absolutely love it.
Sounds terrific. And going to back to the school needs, if you could just explain to me, and we did move this into budget, but as it goes there, increased physical education funding, do you mean you want more teams, more sports?
More what? I'm sorry.
Teams or more sports? It's, you want to be?
No, not not athletics, just the actual budget for physical education. It's very minimal. It's like a.
For the gym teachers?
Yes, for the physical education teachers, because.
And they need.
Equipment costs a lot of money, and there's not a very large budget for that. So oftentimes, we are going to our PTO for additional items.
Okay. And the extended day, you want to do more activity stipend accounts stuff with your extended day?
Oh, we love our extended day budget, and we we would love more of it. The kids absolutely love coming to school, but, you know, Beyond the Bell is what we we call it, and they're here before school and after school. Our our robotics instructor right now, probably, she probably left by now, but she's there till five o'clock every day. They have a competition coming up this weekend. So the kids, the kids love the different opportunities that that we afford to them, and we'd love to give them more.
And the Chromebooks?
So Chromebooks, I I put Chromebook cart, the difference being, excuse me?
You just want the cart, not the books?
We just want the carts, because what we're finding is that the students are losing their Chromebook chargers. And so when they come to school, we have all these dead Chromebooks and nothing to charge them. And so if teachers had these carts in their classroom, we could charge them for them.
I get it. I get it. Your your chronic absenteeism data was really good, too, and your accountability. But there are two populations that are still struggling with pretty high chronic absenteeism. I think it was your twenty-nine percent of your lowest-performing students and twenty-five percent of the white students. That's a lot of, I mean, overall, your school did well, but I think those two populations, it's really, it's distressing to see numbers that high.
Yes.
So what kind of, I know you're doing contests and.
So we, yes, well, each month, we're, we are doing monthly assemblies with our grade-level classes, and we're recognizing students not only weekly but monthly for their attendance. And then we're also adding in, you know, someone who's either like improved attendance for a short period of time, or someone who's been struggling or coming into school late. We're trying to incentivize them to come to school every day and on time. It's certainly difficult when you go from COVID years of stay home if you don't feel well, to all of a sudden, you know.
You're fine.
You you need to be in school because you're considered chronically, because if not, you're considered chronically absent. So it's a big difference. So we're we're fighting the battle, but we're 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 trying to incentivize and help our students and get them there.
Did I hear you mention something about tutoring?
Tutoring? Our MCAS, I mean, our S T math crew, or do you mean our tutoring with our grade-eight math program?
That's the one that, yeah.
The the S G T I, this targeted? Yes.
Yes.
Yes. So we're doing that with our eighth grade. So they are doing online tutoring three days a week for thirty minutes each time.
So that's what they call high dosage tutoring?
Yes.
And where did you get the money for that?
We did a grant with Kim Quinn.
Nice, nice.
And so it's a twelve-week program, and then we were able to add more, actually, we we just met with them so that we can add more students to this opportunity. And then every twelve weeks, we'll either add students or change the the area in which they're working on.
I've just heard some really good reports on how well that works. So I'll be interested to see. It's exciting that it's here. So thank you, Ms. Quinn, for bringing that to us. And I'll make a motion, I'll take it. Mr. Bogoli makes a motion, seconded by Mrs. Hubley, to approve the plan. You're approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for coming.
Thank you for having us. So thank you for the opportunity to have a discussion with you about Central's Improvement Plan and to share with you where we are and where we will continue to push to be. Since our last presentation, we have continued our focus on the whole student and to make their middle school years educational, supportive, and create lifelong memories that they will talk about for years to come. One example of these type memories was last year's grade-eight end-of-the-year trip with a hundred and eighty-one students going through Hershey, Gettysburg, and Harrisburg, Pennsylvania, with a stop at the American Dream in New Jersey. As seen on pages thirty-five and thirty-six, our Beyond the Bell school activities are full every year, but they are presented with ideas from students. For example, we have our Pokemon Club and Crafting Club that began this year. And these are just a few of the activities that have been organized by students or with student input. We have and will be continuing with our 3D Printing Club, Creative Writing Club, Running Club, Early Bird Soccer, Prism, Chess Club, Tabletop and Board Game Club, SAD, and many more. I would like to acknowledge Central's Assistant Principal Kathy Mahoney. Kathy continues to be an asset at Central Middle School. By on top of her daily duties as Assistant Principal, she continues to advise all the SAD group leaders. She chairs the PBIS team, as well as being the Diversity Club Advisor, which created our We Are Central multicultural event. These are just a few examples of how she goes above and beyond for the students and families at Central Middle School. I've asked Kathy to share with you about the We Are Central event, as well as some of our other D E I initiatives.
Thank you, and hi, everyone. It's nice to see you all, and thanks for having us here. First, I just wanted to say that we are very happy to see participation in our Diversity Club continue to grow and create new ideas for the whole school. These members are the leaders for diversity, but try to get all students involved and give students an opportunity to have their voices heard. As Rick mentioned, we are very excited, we were very excited to host our second annual We Are Central multicultural event this past spring. This event was brought forth by the students in our after-school Diversity Club. These students had voiced their desire to highlight and celebrate ethnic backgrounds and cultural richness of all of the students at Central. They recognized the diverse community we have at Central and wanted to learn more from each other. Our students have worked tirelessly to ensure that every student who wanted to participate in the multicultural event had a voice and a chance to represent their culture. The response was overwhelming, with nearly every teacher and student contributing in some way. Teachers in their classes created a wide variety of projects, resulting in hundreds of students' works displayed in our gym. Families and students volunteered to share traditional dances and musical performances, filling the auditorium stage with around ten incredible acts throughout the afternoon. It was heartwarming to see students beaming with pride as their families joined in to celebrate their cultures. Generous donations from local restaurants turned the cafeteria into a showcase of international cuisine with hundreds enjoying diverse food. Our Diversity Club's exceptional efforts resulted in over five hundred attendees, far exceeding the expectations. Inspired by this success, we are planning our annual We Are Central event for the spring. As a club, we will begin preparing after the first of the year. In addition to the club and event this year, we've taken a new approach by forming a D E I student-led council, which has been meeting weekly since October to focus on initiatives and encourage inclusive communication. In working with our D E I parent representatives, we highlighted monthly celebrations with students focusing on specific ones to bring them to life through creative and engaging activities. One example is that we recently celebrated a school-wide origami crane display for National Origami Day. Another idea for the students was to create a flag display in a common area to represent everyone. They took an active role in bringing this vision to life, ensuring it truly reflects the community. It's been inspiring to see everyone proudly celebrate their backgrounds and the flags that symbolize their identities. A photo of the displays featured on the cover. These efforts continue to strengthen our community. It is our hope to continue building on the success of our multicultural event while further expanding our Diversity Club and related initiatives, strengthening a more inclusive and connected school community.
Thank you, Kathy. Offering such a wide variety of clubs and activities that focus on the students' individual interests as well as unique needs is creating another level, another layer of our surrounding care atmosphere to make the students feel a sense of belonging. This was one support that we used at Central to assist in our absenteeism. Last year, Last year, we utilized the support of Saturday School, where we averaged 13 students for the six sessions that we offered. We love celebrating our students' perfect attendance with fun and exciting rewards. Each week, students with perfect attendance are entered in a drawing for a chance to win. The lucky winner gets a certificate to bring home, along with their choice of prizes from the PBIS Rams Reward Menu, and they get to take a shot in the basketball hoop located in the main office to score a gift card. At the end of each month, students with perfect attendance are entered in a monthly drawing. One student from each grade is selected to pick a bonus prize with amazing options like games, science toys, do-it-yourself kits, and much more. Plus, they get to also choose a prize from the PBIS Rams Rewards Menu. We also keep the fun going on Fun Fridays during lunch. When grades meet the cafeteria PBIS expectations for the week, they all earn the chance to enjoy music in the cafeteria. And they can be, they can even make a song request. To sweeten the deal, we randomly select students with perfect attendance for that week to choose for the songs. Students love hearing their names announced and picking the songs for everyone to enjoy. It's all about creating that positive atmosphere, engaging students, where students will feel celebrated for their hard work and great attendance. We are continuing our school collaboration initiative, Principal's Path. The Principal's Path, teachers will be, have the opportunity to engage in peer observations, coaching, collaborative planning, and enhance their curriculum. We have MCAS support in meetings. Early Release Wednesdays are ramping it up for MCAS days. These specialized days will help in supporting our lowest-performing groups. And again, this year will be used to provide support to the students that may show gaps based on the negative impact of learning loss. As we reflected and analyzed our 2324 goals, which are on pages three through six, our MAP data shows that we met our goals and continued our growth. Specifically in mathematics, where each grade exceeded the goal of an increase of four RIT points on their own and in all grades increased by at least 10 points. In science, all grades exceeded the goal of two RIT points, with each having an increase of three. And in reading, we exceeded the whole school goal of increasing three RIT points. Grade six increased the most with five RIT points. In analyzing the 2324 MCAS data, we found that our scores were superior to the state's scores in all subject areas and grade levels. In English Language Arts, exceeding and meeting expectation scores were notably higher in grade six. In their grade-level cohorts, scores improved when compared to the 2223 results, with notable increases in grade seven. The most significant gain was in grade eight, where there was an increase of exceeding expectations and a substantial decrease in the partially meeting expectations category. In the 2324 MCAS in mathematics, a school-wide analysis documented an increase in exceeding and meeting expectations and scores in grade seven and a slight decrease in grades six and eight when compared to our 2223 scores. On the 2324 MCAS in science and technology, the number of students exceeding expectations nearly doubled from 2223 scores. This school year, to help improve our ELA-MCAS scores, as seen on page seven, it is clear that the Central students will benefit from an intentional focus in the writing domain. To support the 2425 writing achievement goal in grades six through eight, the vertical team's action steps integrate the following focal points: Targeted writing lessons, regular writing practice, unified writing language and tools, collaborative review and adjustment. In this year for math, to help improve our MAP and MCAS scores, as seen on page 11, in grades six, there will be a specific focus on the real and complex number systems. Grade seven, statistics and probability. Grade eight, operations and algebraic thinking. We have continued our successful strategies like math-focused SSBs for all math teachers to meet the students that are in need of extra support. In science, as seen on page 16, MCAS supports are in place during Rampant It Up Wednesdays. Each grade level will focus on the science domain to support reaching this goal. In grade six, physical science. In grade seven, earth science. And in grade eight, life science. For the 2425 school year, we've added a new English learner goal to our school improvement plan. And we continued with keeping the new additional goals from last year, which was our social studies goal and a DEI goal. Our EL goal has been created to help improve the 17.7-point decrease in progress towards proficiency, with the understanding that our former grade eight students are no longer at Central. The addition of this second English language, our English language teacher, has helped reduce class sizes. We have also had the implementation of a new curriculum. These changes have allowed teachers to dedicate more time and attention to individual student needs, enhancing the overall learning experience. We are again very fortunate to be partnering with the Quincy Asian Resources. And as you can see on page 28, we continue with our diversity, equity, and inclusion goal again this year. This goal was thoughtfully developed in partnership with our previous Central Citywide DEI representatives and with input from our current representatives, Phoebe Chan, Shiv Singh, and Margarita Wong. We are grateful for the strong collaboration and relationship we've built with them, which continues to strengthen our efforts. In addition, we are excited to continue with our SEL goal, as seen on page 24, including lessons from our new addition of the Sandy Hook Project in trauma-informed classrooms. When looking at the vocal survey on page 46, results of the PBIS focus with the acronym of RAMS can be seen, with R standing for respect. 93% of grade eight felt that a staff, that all staff respects all students, no matter what race, culture, family income, religion, sex, or sexual orientation. 94% felt teachers promote respect among students. A is for attitude. 95% of students are open to having friends who come from different backgrounds. 92% felt that teachers are available when they need to talk with them. M is for motivation. 96% felt teachers believe in all students can do well in their learning. And 86% felt that teachers support them even when their work is not their best. S is for safety. 97, 90, 90% felt that teachers, students, and the principal work together to address bullying issues. And 88% felt if they inform an adult at the school, that the bullying issue will be addressed. Part of ramping it up in early release days will be focusing on all vocal-type questions to reinforce situations like rumors, emotional supports, bullying, and other important concerns that we feel should be covered, but were also pointed out in the vocal survey. Our PBIS program continues to thrive, thanks to the collaborative effort and creativity of our staff in finding new ways of encouraging positive behavior. A highlight is our RAMS of the Week, where selected students can choose rewards, such as creating something on the 3D printer or enjoying extra time in the gym with a friend during SSP. As well as our RAMS of the Month, with students being celebrated at an assembly. As you can see on pages 37 and 38, we have a few upcoming events that you are more than welcome to attend, including our winter concert, drama production, and world language fashion show, where last year, we had 21 students welcome the audience with an opening greeting in their home language. A picture of the end of the celebration, the show, can be seen on the cover. Currently, we're preparing an excitement for our 10th Annual Rams Giving, which will be celebrated on Wednesday. The day promises to be packed with fun activities, including relay races, healthy stations, minute-to-win-it challenges, dancing, games, and much more. You're more than welcome to come check out the fun. There are so many remarkable things that happen in and out of the classroom at Central and words cannot express the pride I have for the Central community and to be the principal of such a re-amazing school. So again, thank you for allowing us to share the school improvement plan with you and as always, via tremendous support from you and Mayor Koch. Thank you.
Thank you. Comments or questions for my colleagues?
I, I won't say.
Great school. You do a great job, Rick, and appreciate all you do for the kids.
Thank you.
Mrs. Hubley?
I love how you add the RAM in all the time. That, that, it just makes you smile when you're, we're listening to you talk. It's, it's very, it's very nice. I also appreciate all that you do. Great environment at your school. Love the goals. I love the civics goal. It's great. We're going to put the facilities into Facility Subcommittee and the school needs the ones that are budgetary, putting them into budget. But I did want to ask about safety-concerned ones. Now, the intermittent electrical surges, brownouts, and the fence needed around the generator at the recess area.
Yeah, so, so the intermittent, that's been going on for a long time and they feel like that's caused, we've had people, companies come in like for the coffee machines and that's something they'll point out. You'll have, you're having problems because something, they have devices on there that show how many times it's gone, things have gone wrong. And we think that has caused some issues with computers and other issues like that. So that's been an ongoing thing. And then if you go to what we will call the outdoor area, we try not to call it recess area because we don't want kids to think they can run and run around on the tar out there. There's a bunch of rocks and then it goes right to the generator and there's nothing in between the tar to the generator. So just looking, we've been looking, we put up like a fake fence for a while and that ends up falling down. So just something to keep kids out.
I was gonna say, I don't remember there being a fence there, so I was gonna try to figure out. Mr. Melvie, is that something we can look at?
Working on getting that done as quickly as possible. So I've talked to him about it and hopefully it'll be done.
Okay.
It'll show up here at a time.
Great, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Gutrom?
Thank you. Good to see you again. Couple of things. Congratulations on the numbers and the extended day offerings, which I thought looked terrific. I love the Anti-Bullying Week, the Challenge Week. That looks super cool, like a lot of fun, about everybody gets into it. Yeah, you don't see that. The RAM of the week, the RAM of the month, I, I, you know, I think you, I don't know if you still do, you hand something out. I rem, I probably still have my kid, when my kids came home with it, you know, whatever it was, RAM of the week, RAM of the month. The pride that they feel when they get that, it's just lasting and it gets them invested. And it's just a small thing, but it mattered significantly and I still look back and I remember that. And then the last thing was, was it 2015 when the school opened?
2014.
14. And then I just looked at your facility needs and it crushes me that, it feels like it just opened, that there are so many needs after 10 years. But I guess with any building or home or whatever the case things happen. But just love the school, love the spirit, love what you do. So thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Perdidos?
Thanks. So this is my fourth time I get to say thank you. My kids went to your school and knowing firsthand how great of a school you both run, not only you, Mr. Spurro, but absolutely, Ms. Mahoney. You know, one of my kids could have had a otherwise very difficult journey through middle school and you single-handedly helped my, my kiddo get through some tough years. So, and I'm sure my kid is not alone in that. So thank you for your support on that. And just, and the puns are not for us, the puns are always. The puns are like always there and I feel like you just do that at home, like with your family and your kids. Like it just comes naturally, the ramilly and it's, but it really is, Mr. Gutrom said, the small things like that that just really kind of over and over create that culture of just, you know, a family and being there and just kind of being together in that, you know, silliness and that. But also just the importance of being together and working together. Your DEI and SEL efforts and action steps are super impressive. I'm glad you have parents like Shiv and Phoebe there to help with that, but you guys do a great job with that anyway. So I think that they'll only help with that. I love the civics project. Mr. Pavo is a gem. I know he helps out a lot with that. Love of, of, you know, civics and what otherwise might be kind of a dry subject for some students really makes it come to life. So really, really great there. Love seeing the, you probably, you guys had, I think, the best numbers on the vocal data for students respecting each other and classmates behaving the way teachers want them to. But again, it kind of permeates that groups of students picking on one student and students being called names and made fun of. It still kind of permeates all across the whole district and honestly, all the grade levels that we've seen on the vocal data. So, you know, just something to still work on. So all your efforts are still needed. So even though you guys do a great job, just keep at it. Hopefully, we'll see those numbers keep dropping as kids feel less of that and less, less kind of singled out. Couple of questions I had. The black substance on the outside walls, want to, you talk a little more about what that might be?
Well, I mean, I, I mean, I haven't done any science experiments on it, so I can't speak exactly what it is. But I think it's just, it's probably just stuff that collects. When you're on Hancock Street, you know, and maybe it's, you know, dude cars, I'm not sure. But it's, it's visible there and we've had people point out when you're walking, you know, up to the second floor and you look out the window, you can see some of it. But, you know, I don't think it's, it's doing anything into the schools or anything like that. I just think it's on the exterior of the building.
Okay. Oh, yeah, sure.
Essentially, it's, it's a product of limestone and the exhaust and other contaminants that are in the air. It oxidizes the limestone and it turns black.
Gotcha.
So it can be power washed off. It is not anything other than the oxidation of the limestone turning black. So according to Mr. Hines, it's not a safety issue.
I was just wondering mold, yeah, I was thinking mold.
No, definitely not that. It is the oxidation of the limestone with exhaust and other thing, pollen that may be in the, you know, things that are just floating in the air. But it is not mold. It is not a safety issue. It is an aesthetic issue for sure, because people may see it and think that, but that's not the case. So.
Okay, thank you. And my last question, or it's something just to point out. Chronic absenteeism, a couple of subgroups went up a little bit, but the Hispanic-Latino subgroup kind of went up pretty drastically. Well, it went up pretty significantly, right? And I just didn't know if those, if you could speak to anything you're doing specifically maybe for that subgroup or just as a whole?
Yeah, so I mean, we, we do have our conversations with students about attendance. Last year, we were fortunate that, you know, the district allowed, with state's permission, to have our Saturday schools. You know, and again, we averaged a large number of kids coming in and that was about phone conversations with parents. So no matter what subgroup it was, not one specific subgroup was targeted. We went and tried every kid to bring them in. And so that definitely helped get below that, that magic number, 18, for, for a few kids. But it is something that, you know, each guidance counselor, as well as Kathy, myself, we're, we're working with any type of family when the students are, the numbers are going up. And we have meetings with Dr. Perkins and Mr. Marani as well to discuss student attendance and things that we can work, work on to, to get the kids in the building.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
I have just one question and one comment for you. The data is excellent. I'd really love to see you differentiating for subgroups in your goals. I think that's so important. I hadn't seen that anyplace else. I was going to say the same thing about the chronic absenteeism. I'm very impressed that you have the 198 APC kids, but you also have 208 kids taking advanced classes. So that's 43% of your school is taking advanced classes. It's amazing.
Thank you.
It's really a great, a great, great number. And I was very happy to see that I see myself in my textbooks, was 75%, but then I looked at your numbers and 88% of your kids are either white or Asian. So it's not a big lift for you to do that. You know, I think some of our other schools, it's going to be a bigger lift for them to be able to see themselves in the textbooks. Not that I'm saying you, I'm glad they see themselves, but we probably should be looking for more of that. And I have no other questions, so I'll entertain the motion to accept the plan, Mr. Brolly, seconded by Mrs. Hubley, and you are all set.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Good evening, School Committee, Superintendent Melvie, Dr. Perkins, and SLT. It is my pleasure to be here with Ms. Foley to present to you our school improvement plan for the 2024-2025 school year. Before we present our plan, there are some individuals to whom we must express our appreciation. The staff at Southwest works tirelessly every day to provide the best education possible to our students. In addition to their teaching responsibilities, they have met to review data, reflect on instruction, and create the meaningful goals and rigorous action steps that are at the heart of our plan. The superintendent's leadership team, under the direction of Superintendent Melvie and Dr. Perkins, are instrumental in the success of our school and unwavering in their support of us. Our PTO and school council are so generous with their time and have provided us valuable feedback on this plan. As I stated in my principal's message, the process of writing... As I stated in my principal's message, the process of writing a school improvement plan begins first with identifying those areas to celebrate. In reflecting on the 2023-24 school year, there is so much positive to share. Our students reach for the stars in so many ways. As I visited classrooms, I was consistently impressed with what I saw. Students were conversing, collaborating, and working hard. Teachers were utilizing new and exciting practices to engage and motivate their students. Academic highlights included our annual STEM fair, our grade five science showcase, the grade seven ELA playoffs, the adoption of ST math across grades five, six, and seven, exciting projects such as cave art, painting, and model cell making in grade six, and so much more.
To enhance, to enhance our academic curriculum and promote positive relationships between staff and students, we continued our successful enrichment program. This program, held during the school day once a week, allows teachers and students the opportunity to work together on common interests and includes such offerings as sketchbooks and quiet reading, origami, sign language, chess, and floor hockey, to name just a few. Numerous field trips allowed our students the opportunity to explore our community. Last year, our students traveled as close as Lincoln Hancock and as far as Gettysburg, with trips to the Museum of Science, Ropes Course, and TD Garden in between. Beyond the classroom, our extended day program continues to flourish with over 250 students signed up for the over 25 before and after school programs. Fan favorites from last year included Creative Comics and Crafts, Badminton, Financial Literacy Club, Walk-in Club, Language Club, and our very popular new Taylor Swift Club, aptly named Taylor's Version. As a spinoff of this club, our student council hosted a showing of the Eros Tour movie that got the whole school rocking. Other similar events, including the Halloween Dance, Family Craft Night, Color Run, Community Outreach, the atrium at Fox, at Faxon Woods, and our pre-Thanksgiving rally and flag football game, all went far in enhancing our positive school climate and building our sense of community. Our Southwest Eagles continue to soar in so many ways and they make us proud daily.
Over the past two years that I have been principal at Southwest, a major focus has been to strengthen the culture and climate in our building, to one that is inclusive, supportive, culturally responsive, and student-focused. To this end, we have undertaken many successful initiatives to support that positive school culture. Our One School, One Book initiative continues to allow us to address school-wide themes and come together as a community. Our PBIS program continues to evolve and grow, this year including twice monthly whole-school extended homerooms to reflect on the core values of being respectful, responsible, and ready, and the addition of our Golden Eagle Homeroom Contest designed to weak, designed to weekly recognize the homeroom that best exemplifies those values. Our Student Support Center and Saturday School Programs continue to provide opportunities for addressing student behavior while also keeping them in class as much as possible. Our guidance staff works tirelessly with our students to address their social-emotional well-being, resolve peer conflicts, model restorative practices, and address issues related to chronic absenteeism as well as student academic performance. Our student conduct data shows us these measures are working as both our suspension rates and chronic absenteeism rates went down dramatically in the past school year. Our vocal data continues to show the strength of our diversity and relationships between our students and staff. That data also continues to show us the work we have to do in helping our students form positive peer relationships. And this will be important for us to focus on the work that we do with our student support team.
On our first assessment day of the year, held on October 9th, our staff came together to review our 2023 and 2024 academic data. Together, we disaggregated both MAP and MCAS data and reflected on what that data tells us about student learning. In some ways, these were difficult conversations, but at the heart of these conversations was always our why, why we do what we do. And the answer to that is always that our students deserve the very best and there is nothing more important than promoting the growth of all students. Our MAP data this year did show that desire growth, as in all content areas and all grade levels, our students did demonstrate solid growth over the course of the year. Our goal set down in last year's school improvement plan related to growth on MCAS. In the area of ELA, our students demonstrated a slight growth in composite scaled score and met their goal, which looked for a school-wide 5% increase in percentage points possible on question-type essay, indicating that at all grade level, our students' ability to write text-dependent essays did improve. In the area of math, the average composite scaled score of all students did see a decrease. Our math goal last year centered around an increase in specific domains identified by teachers, specifically numbers and operations in base 10 in grade 5, geometry in grade 6, and expressions and equations in grade 7 and 8. While our 6th and 8th grade students saw significant growth in their target areas, students in grades 5 and 7 saw a decrease resulting in us not meeting this particular goal. Similarly, in the area of science and technology and engineering, our students saw an overall decrease in average composite scaled score and unfortunately did not meet the goal of a 3.5 increase in points possible in both constructed and selective response. Of significant concern in our review of this data was the performance of our many subgroups, particularly students with disabilities and EL or former EL students. Across content areas, these groups did show the largest drops in achievement. The performance of these subgroups underscores the need to provide inclusive, differentiated instruction that meets the needs of all learners. And examination, examination of student growth data further highlights this need and results in our dedication to focusing on these groups in particular over the course of the school year.
This review of MCAS data has provided the cornerstone for our learning goals for this school year as it speaks to where our focus should be, continuing to move all students forward in a meaningful way. And to do so, we have strived this year to provide our teachers with the time they need to collaborate with each other and plan for instruction. This is happening through weekly curriculum meetings. And each week, staff from the same content area come together to reflect on their practice and look for those areas in which we can improve instruction and provide support. Particular focus of these teams is ensuring that the tier-one instruction provided to all students is rigorous and based on best practices. At these meetings, teachers are identifying what those best practices are and which should be consistent across the school, an example of this being the adoption of common strategies for writing. These teams also focus on how to best use the data provided by informal formative assessments to inform instruction and identify those students in need of targeted tier-two support. Our dynamic schedule allows our staff time to come together in these teams to discuss how our students best learn and to make plans for how to help them succeed. In addition to their focus on instruction, these curriculum meetings have been vital in creating the goals and action steps included in our plan. As a result of their efforts, we have set forth the following student learning goals for this 24-25 school year.
In ELA reading and social studies, our goal, our goal is that our students will continue to develop their ability to write text-based responses and narratives at or above grade level. Specifically, an emphasis will be placed on improving student reading comprehension as it's imperative that students can effectively read, comprehend, and interact with a variety of complex texts to be able to write about those texts. Students will work to improve their ability to identify key ideas and details and integrate the knowledge and ideas from texts into their own writing. Progress towards this goal will be measured by a school-wide 4% increase in percentage points possible for the domain of reading and a 4% increase in percent points possible for the question-type essay. The action steps created to support this goal speak specifically to it as they create a plan that balances a consistent school-wide approach to writing with increased instruction and reading, particularly as it relates to finding details and evidence in texts and using those details and evidence to support student ideas, to support ideas in students' writing. In the area of math, our goal looks for students in math classes to show evidence of growth and achievement in their ability to answer constructive response questions. Students will be provided with ample opportunity to analyze, evaluate, and solve complex math problems as well as show their thinking through the writing of constructive responses that are at or above grade level. Particular emphasis will be paid to familiarizing students with the academic language included in writing tasks and the explicit instruction and modeling of constructive responses. Progress towards this goal will be measured by a 4% increase in school percentage, percentage points possible in the question-type constructive response. Action steps created to support this goal include the continuation of work with math consultant Molly Voki as well as explicit instruction in the vocabulary of math and the skills needed to write constructive response in math. In the area of science, our goal for this year focuses on all students showing an improvement in their ability to perform higher-level thinking skills in the science and technology engineering classrooms, including inferring, reasoning, applying, and analyzing. Additionally, a particular focus will be paid to writing in the content area of science. Improvement in these skills will not only improve student performance in the science classroom, but will also improve students' ability to answer constructive response questions at or above grade level. And progress towards this goal will be shown by a school-wide increase of 5%, in school percentage points possible in the question-type constructive response. Action steps created to support this goal look for students to be utilizing a common format of claim evidence reasoning in their writing and for ample time to be given for students to practice that writing style.
In creating our action steps this year for all content areas, we have included action steps that speak specifically to supporting our English language learners. In addition, for the second year, we have included in our student learning goals, one related directly to EL. Our goal in this area looks for all English language learners to be provided with high-quality, targeted instruction to increase their English fluency in all WIDA domains, listening, reading, speaking, and writing, with the intention of all students meeting the target set down for them by the access exam. Specifically, those learners on student success plans will be a focus with the goal of reducing the number of students on SSPs by 33%. Action steps designed to promote this goal include explicit instruction in all WIDA domains as well as collaboration between EL staff and content area teachers to ensure targeted support is occurring consistently across all curriculums. At the heart of all we do is an unwavering commitment to our students and the knowledge that they deserve the world. Their achievement, their social-emotional well-being, and their success are so important to us. We are confident we have created a strong plan with those elements at its heart. We are looking forward to implementing this plan and the wonderful year of growth ahead. Thank you for allowing us to present this plan to you and thank you for your continued support.
Thank you. Ms. Hoobley, are you good?
Okay, yeah. Thank you so much. I'm trying to read my notes here. I have a lot of things and I'm trying to figure out what I wrote. I love, I love your goals, the science and technology goals, great. And the self-awareness and self-management goal, love those. Your extended day offerings, love the financial literacy, that's fabulous. I know Mr. Gudrow probably appreciates that one. And the hooked on yarn, that, that's great. I think that, that is fabulous. And I love a majority of your clubs are for all students, so that's great. So, obviously you don't have that many facilities, I would hope. But it says your teachers need, needs of teachers. So for last year, it said there was a fourth EL teacher and an EL tutor, and those are not in for this year. So those were, that's all set now?
Yes.
Okay. But it does say that you're still looking for a reading specialist interventionist?
Yes. We've noticed a huge success having a math interventionist who works primarily with grades 5 through 7 and 8, and we would love to have that for reading. We think that it would make a huge impact with our kids, especially our EL students and some of these targeted interventions that we need support with.
And your vocal survey looked really good in a lot of the things that I was looking for. And especially with the 5th grade, my, my teachers care about me as a person 93%, that was great. And the 90%, I feel safe at school. So that's great. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's Perdidos.
Thank you. Thanks very much for the plan and very thoughtful. I really appreciated the deep dive kind of into the subgroups. As you were looking at your data, you really kind of didn't just look at the summary or, you know, calculation. You really delved into the subgroups and how you impacted each one, so I really appreciated that. I think that's really the way, because you have so many subgroups and different, you know, it's a very diverse school. I think that's the way to make strides and that's how you have to do it. And I think that you're right on the money on that. The MAP data was really optimistic. The MCAS scores similar to Point were a little, little rough. But it seemed like, again, it was in your action steps and I hope, you know, moving forward, we'll see a little bit of improvement there, as I'm sure it's impacting you as well. I'm sure you saw that.
No, definitely. I think we, you know, our staff worked really hard and we have so many positive things going on. So we're just, we need a little more time to see how things pan out, yeah.
Yeah. But the MAP data was definitely a good encouraging sign, so you're, you're on the right track, I think. Good class sizes, that was great to see, because it's always, you know, the smaller the class, the more you can kind of get that individual attention, so I think that's great. Lot of incidents, so I am glad that, you know, suspensions went down, but the number of incidents as a whole, you know, if you need additional support, you know, let us know or let the superintendent know. And because that, that's, I'm sure that's very challenging for you and takes up a lot of.
Yeah, and I think too, when Sue and I talk about it, some of them are much more minor, they're minor, you know. There are a lot, we try to do our best to record everything and so there are a lot, but our numbers are going down.
Yeah, no, and I don't want to ask you to get into detail, so that's, that's great. The, as Mrs. Hoobley stated, the extended day offerings are awesome. Sign language, fantastic. I've been, you know, trying to see if we can get something at the high school for that for many years and I'm glad that that's at least an offering in the middle school level at your school. Spartan Race, taking kids to Fenway Park for the Spartan Race is awesome. I mean, what a great way to like bond and have a group really be together. I can't, that must be, you know, I'm sure you have to fundraise for that one, but what a great thing to do.
Mr. Tenalia took about 70 kids this year, along with some teachers who volunteered, so we were really lucky. The kids had a great time.
Yeah, and it's not only that, you get to see Fenway Park, the different spots in it that you don't normally get to see unless you have, you know, like a all-season pass, which I'm sure, you know, most of those, most of our kids don't.
They had so much fun.
So it's really neat. So I really love that. The mindfulness group, I think that was really great. I do want to point out, as I did with the Point vocal data, where you guys have 5th grade in your building, just again, to kind of add a little bit of volume to the 5th grade voices that older students scare or pick on younger students, you know, that was, it's not insignificant. So that, in my mind, these are the younger kids in the building, so I just want to be mindful of that. Again, it's nothing for you and your building, it's just the way your building's set up and something we need to remember, especially when 50% have seen a fight. It's, it's just something we, you know, our 10-year-olds are being exposed to, so just something to keep in mind. And I just had one question about bathroom doors on your facilities. Can you talk a little bit about doors for your bathrooms?
Yes. So we have airport-style bathrooms. We have a beautiful building, as everyone knows. So, you know, I think we just look at that in terms of it, some of the locations they're in, they're loud. We just want to make sure that students have as much privacy as possible when needed. I know sometimes, depending on situations, we'd have to close one. We don't have the ability to do that at times, so it's just something that we thought would be helpful overall.
The high school, Quincy High School, has the kind of airport-style bathrooms and Southwest does. It's our experience with both schools. That was the main reason why we absolutely said to our architects at the Squawam School, no airport-style bathrooms. They rarely, it's not really practical for schools, K to 12. Unfortunately, it was built into Southwest and Quincy High. Quincy High were working on getting mechanisms to close off bathrooms when we need to, and we'll have to work with Southwest to do the same. But certainly, having lived the experience of airport-style bathrooms, they do not work for K to 12 and we need doors on our bathrooms. So certainly, the new Squawam Elementary School and all of the school, of course, the RDLC as well. We made sure that was the case there as well. All of our schools moving forward will, will not have those airport-style doors. They just don't work for various reasons. So we'll try and correct it. We're working to correct it at Quincy High and we'll try and correct it. Unfortunately, at a brand-new building essentially at Southwest, but that will be a work in progress for sure.
Are you concerned on the effect it might have on vaping?
I think that's one of, one of them, yeah. I think that, you know, you can't monitor each bathroom at the same time. You don't, you know, one is right off the cafeteria, so you really have to be on top of how many kids are in, out. So I think anything, it's out of your sight sometimes, you know, whatever happens in there, so.
I guess, I mean, with the, with the door, you're kind of shielding.
I think you have more control over how many students are in at a time. You know, if you have, you can always lock one off if you want. You know, if you have, you can always lock one off if you want just one location to be used, so you can monitor better, so I think, yeah.
It's the locking off of the bathrooms that really helps the most, because we can basically concentrate supervision in a particular area of the school and not have to worry about the airport-style bathrooms being open and accessible. So it's the concentration of supervision that allows us to control student behavior. The airport-style bathrooms don't really help with that.
Yeah, I can appreciate both sides of that. I, you know, students need access to the bathroom, and sometimes it's tough. My own kids have had issues when bathrooms are closed off, it's hard to get to one, it's hard to get there and not be late to the next class, and it gets a little challenging, so it's definitely a bigger issue and a bigger concern. But for now, I appreciate the response. Thank you.
Mrs. Cahill.
Me first, thank you. Welcome back. So, I mean, I think Southwest is a beautiful school, and I can imagine you love going to work every day. I think you are both a great leadership team, you know. I'm impressed with the activities. I mean, you have a lot of fun activities that sound super energizing. And I also appreciate how serious you kind of reflected, not just on the data, but the vocal survey and all of that. I mean, you know, just getting your arms around the MCAS data, where you have consistent numbers in 6 through 8 in math, and then you have just crazy drop-off in 5 and 7, and then in EL in 7th grade, it's like, how do you wrap your head around that? It's hard to follow. But on the vocal data, on your reflection, I, again, I thought you were extremely candid. You know, some principals come in and they just share with you, and you have to dig through to find out where the data is, but you shared some of the other areas where you really need to look at and work on, and I think you pointed out, and it wasn't egregious, but the bullying issue was an issue that you wanted to focus on through the vocal data. So I liked how you made a specific acknowledgement around that and the need for improvement. And, you know, so I went back and I looked at the numbers for the other schools, and there's another middle school that's right in your range about how they feel, but then the others might be 10%, 15%, or 20% higher. And so, and I know all the principals get together and you talk, but those are the areas where, you know, I'm sure you spot it, you chat about it, you talk about what you're doing, and I think it was, I think it was Rick that was just in here, and he set up, and I pointed out that what I thought was pretty cool, an anti-bullying challenge week with a lot of cool, fun activities. I don't know if he thinks that that plays a part into it, but, you know, just sharing ideas about what they do, and because his numbers in that area were different, and if that makes a difference, or if there's something else that makes a difference. But, you know, peer-to-peer, I always find is the best way to kind of learn who's doing what, and I just appreciate that you acknowledged that there are areas, you know, in the vocal survey, because that's the student's voice, and you hear the voice, and you want to tap that, so, thank you.
We'll talk then, we'll try anything.
Yeah, and again, and they should be reaching out to you in areas where they're, you know, they want to focus, and you've really been a star, so keep it up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Cahill.
Hi. I just want to say that I think you're doing an amazing job. When I'm looking at the numbers, you know, we have all the different schools coming in, and again, every school has its own demographic and its own needs and its own culture, and, you know, and when I'm looking at the school demographics, I mean, your school has the highest number of ELE, you know, FEL, special ed, except for maybe one school, I think, is a little bit higher in the special ed school. So you have three populations of students that really need some extra attention, you know, and focus. And so I think, you know, with the work that you're doing with the population that you're working with, I think you have a good handle on what their needs are to get them, and the numbers and the scores and the test scores don't always reflect that. The MAP scores, yes, because it's during that year, but the MCAS, you know, the 8th grade that was tested last year isn't the 8th grade this year, so that's why your MAP scores are much more important. In your, I do ask the question about the students at your school, is there a large transient population, like students that are coming in and coming out? Because I think that, too, that we need to be conscious of in terms of scores, because the foundation and academic foundation that students might be getting somewhere else aren't consistent with what we're doing, right?
We do. I think this year actually was, we had the least numbers of move-ins in September, October, than we had in the past two years. It was noticeable.
It seems to be more move-ins than move-outs. That seems to be the way it's trending the last, you know, our numbers have been growing. You know, we seem to be getting more move-ins than move-outs, which, you know, which is great, but it definitely poses some challenges.
Right, yeah. So with that, thank you. Thank you for the work you're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you. To that point, I think maybe we should ask for churn in our school improvement plans, Superintendent.
Sure.
Because that does have a huge impact on a school, you know, how many kids are moving in and out every year. But I agree, I think that, I'm looking at your MAP data, and you're taking kids from where you get them, and you're moving them ahead, and that's really all we can ask, and I love the fact that you differentiated your goals, too. It's so important, and I think this was probably the most honest plan I've seen in a long time. I have one question, well, I have two questions. What is the early college high school prep program?
So that's a partnership with Quincy College. It just wrapped up, actually, this past Saturday. So Sue and I identified 7th and 8th graders who are academically strong, sometimes underrepresented, like just great kids who take academics seriously, who maybe aren't the star athlete or, you know, star of the play or whatever, and chose them to be involved with the Saturday program. So it was six weeks, and we had high school and Quincy College teachers teaching. So it was great, they loved it. We had, they asked for 25 students, we gave them 70.
Of course you did.
63. We had great attendance, and some of the students even skipped their tennis match, you know, their final tennis match to go. It was really, really exciting and fun, yeah.
It sounds like a great idea. So, yeah, but my other question was, and this might not even be to you, but on the accountability data, requiring assistance or intervention, you need to focus targeted support. Are you getting any?
Yes.
I don't mean from the district. The district's supposed to do that?
So, yeah, so we actually, because of that designation at two of our schools, we were eligible for a grant, so we actually are recipients. It actually just got approved, I think it will be probably on the next school committee meeting, for the targeted assistance grant, and so we have it divided between Snug Harbor and Southwest. And so some of the work is, you know, like Molly Vokey coming in to do all of that work. She's focused primarily on these two schools. So it's just, you know, some extra funding that we can really put towards the two schools that need it.
And to you again, Aaron. So it said our lowest student group performance was white, but I look at the English language arts and the height, typical growth high, and in the math, it's typical growth low. So I, and then met-targeted in the chronic absenteeism, so what are they trying to get us to do with the white kids?
It's the MCAS scores.
It's the MCAS scores, okay.
Yeah, in both schools, actually.
Okay. So I think you're doing a great job, really. What a great pair.
Thank you.
Lucky to have you there. We're all lucky to have you there. And I'll entertain a motion by Mr. Brugola to accept the plan, secondly by Mrs. Hoobley, and you are approved. Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
Meeting adjourned.
Thank you, everybody.